Okay.
Good evening, welcome to the Tuesday, March 3rd Foxborough Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We are going to enter right into executive session now. I move we enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. Foxborough Highway and Water Employees Union Contract, and also to approve the February 3rd, 2015 Executive Session Minutes. And then we will adjourn from executive session and come back into open session immediately after that at 7:00.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. We're going to sign off now, and we'll be back in about a half hour. Okay, good evening.
How are you?
Welcome back to the Selectmen's Meeting, tonight Tuesday, March 3rd. I'll read the agenda. The Chair reserves the right to call items on the agenda out of order. The times that are listed for items are approximate times, and items may be reached earlier or later than the posted times. The listing of items is those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We just came out of our executive session. At 7:00 PM, we'll have citizens' input, topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. At 7:05, we'll have a Selectmen's Update. 7:10, Bill Keegan and Sharon Wasson with Bill Greeter will discuss the Housing Trust. At 7:20, the Board of Selectmen and the Water and Sewer Commission will have a joint meeting to discuss Spring Town Meeting Warrant Articles. At 7:40, Bob Cutler, our Town Clerk, will come before us with a proposal regarding tenure of office. And at 8:00, Bill Keegan will give us a Town Manager Update. John, can you lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Citizens' input?
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
What I would like to do is point out that just this afternoon, we worked out some details, and assuming that the snow will recede, we're planning, we'd like permission for a townwide cleanup day on Saturday, May 2. And the duly organization has, you know, committed fully again to it. Everybody will have their safety shirts, their gloves, their roots, their ability to break up into teams, and things like that, and to help us make Cleanup Day Number Three as successful as Number One and Two. I'd also ask you to name Tina Belanger to our committee. She has, she was a very hard-working volunteer all the way through this, but she also had some other skills that we thought could really strengthen the program and lighten the load for others, and we'd love to have her name too, to the committee.
Thanks, Jack.
So, Jack, who's on the committee now, besides yourself?
Well, it just...
In AJ?
AJ and myself.
Okay.
And we, we will be coming with some plans to do some expansion, so that Cleanup Day will be a central part of some other year-long, year-round activities.
Okay.
So, so right now, if we could just go this next step, and then we'll put the finishing touches on a...
Great.
A bigger program.
Sounds terrific. Thanks for stepping up, Tina.
I was flattered to be asked, so can't wait to help out.
May 2nd, huh?
Yep. So, we, you know, encourage the different groups and organizations, as well as even groups of neighbors, to take, take on their neighborhood or whatever. And the amazing thing is, it does so much for the town, but you look at the hundreds of people who go home that night feeling very, very good about how they spent their day, and that's real good community building. And fortunately, we can expand and, and get some help. And I don't know, is Mike Johnson here?
No.
No.
No. The other thing I wanted to mention, many, many years ago, when a lot of the town markers that we have near the homes of men and women who lost their lives from World War I forward, those town squares, they needed some attention, as well as some of the historic markers. And John Gattani, a painting contractor who lives in town, came forward and reconditioned all of those forests, and I mean, it was a fabulous job. And he's back again, because the years have passed, and some of the markers are in need of attention, and just as an example, the one, the Veterans Memorial Parking Lot behind the stores, that marker is, that's gonna be number one. But then he'll go around, we'll do all the town squares and all those things, and this is all, he provides all the labor, all the supplies, so I just want to let you know he's gonna be out there, so if somebody sees somebody taking a marker down there, they're stealing it, they're gonna rehab it and get it back up there. And when we make a commitment to these people and their families, that we will never forget those who made that sacrifice. It takes many different forms, and maintaining memorials and markers are a big one of that, and he helps us as a community keep our promise. So, with your blessing, he'll be, well, right now, he could do it without a ladder, but I think you wait, wait a little bit, and get the snow out of the way, but we're so happy to have him on board.
That's, that's really terrific, that he's doing that for all the families in the town. It's wonderful.
Does he paint snowbanks as well?
Yeah.
Could use a little flowers amongst those things, if I'm saying.
But, but Foxborough is that kind of place, where people come forward and give so much, and ask so little in return.
Jack and Tina, will you be putting information on the town website about the annual Cleanup Day?
Yes. Yeah, and we'll get the website up. We just, we're a few days away from finalizing details. But I wondered your blessing, and let everybody know we're coming, and when you go home, you circle that, May 2 on the calendar, and...
Get your work gloves out.
Right.
Just need a motion or just a blessing?
Why don't we make a motion?
I think we need to make a motion, because last year when you came, we needed to formally set up the committee for X, Y, and Z reasons, but where there's a new member.
When we'll appoint Tina first, and then approve the date.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Tina Belanger to join the Cleanup Foxborough Day Committee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I'll make another motion that we designate May 2nd as Foxborough Cleanup Day, and the committee will be publicizing it throughout the spring.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' input? Just a real brief Selectmen's Update. Board wants to again thank all the town employees, the DPW members, Public Safety, everyone who's worked so hard during all the storms, and continue to work and chip away. I think everyone deserves a seat in the beach chair up on the count, on the commons there, so...
It's been removed.
Oh, it has? Okay. So, again, please extend our thanks, Roger, to all, all of your staff, and again, this goes out to all town employees. Thank you. The other item I have is that the Attorney General's Office has approved our signed bylaw, which was voted in at our last town meeting, so very excited to get that information. They have given us some cautions related to it, but it's good to have the word back that it's been approved, and so our group will get back together again. The signed bylaw committee will get back together and review that going forward. So, the next item is Bill Keegan and Sharon and Bill Greeter to discuss the Housing Trust.
Looks like Bill's not gonna be joining us tonight, but that's okay. All right.
Bill had to go to Nantucket. He had a funeral, so he sends his regrets. Before we start talking about the Housing Trust, I wanted to extend a personal invitation to each of you. The final, 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 final Master Plan Workshop will be in this room on March the 26th at 7:00 PM, and it's gonna be looking at goals and objectives, future land use, future policies for the town, really trying to bring the whole three-and-a-half-year process, wrap it up, and, and let's get it finished. But we're hoping that we get a lot of good citizen input. We've had really good input on the questions of the week, and we thank the Foxborough Reporter for their assistance. It's been invaluable. So, we're here tonight, myself and Mr. Keegan, to talk about the Affordable Housing Trust. Thanks, Bill. Just passed out the exact same thing as that with me. So, the Housing Trust was created at the annual town meeting in 2013, and it was one of the recommendations of our Housing Production Plan, that we create an affordable house, municipal affordable housing trust, to actually accomplish some of the goals of the Housing Production Plan. And it was made all the more necessary or pertinent by the fact that the developer at Chestnut Green has chosen to give the town cash in lieu of some of the affordable units he was going to build. So, he's paying it off. At the end, there will be $320,000 that has been paid in lieu of constructing eight units of affordable housing. And it would seem that the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust is the perfect group to figure out how to best use that money for the benefit of all the people in the town. It was not one of the easier activities that we ever got through town meeting. We met, we dealt with a number of town officials and town citizens. John Gray in particular, when he was on AdCom, asked a lot of really deep questions that required a lot of thought. We found ourselves not only drafting the article, but coming up with bylaws, and explanations, and, and all sorts of research into affordable housing trusts. At the time we created ours, there were about sixty-one of them across the state. We looked at all the surrounding communities that had them, talked to most of those committees, got feedback about what worked and what didn't work. And as I note in my memo, there are places in the proposed regulations where we are put some caveats on the powers that the Act would allow the Housing Trust to, to do. The statute says that the housing trustees may sell, or lease, or convey any property, make any contracts. We've said that they can't make disbursements without a vote of the Board of Trustees and the approval of the Board of Selectmen. We further said they can't enter into any long-term contract without the consent of town meeting. We felt it was really important to have checks and balances to make sure that what was being done on behalf of the town, the town was in fact aware of what was going on. So, as noted, we've drafted regulations. They are very close to what you've seen before with two exceptions. The original regulation said a member of the AdCom would be on the committee. I have since read the general bylaws that said that AdCom members can only be on AdCom. And secondly, we had initially said that the Board of Selectmen would appoint the trust. I also reread the Town Manager Act and found that that's something that the Town Manager could be responsible for. Given the fact that the trust is scheduled to sunset on July 1st, 2016, which is literally around the corner, I'm suggesting that you all adopt these regulations, charge Mr. Keegan with appointing a Board of Trustees for the Housing Trust, and let's get moving. I'd love to do something good with the $320,000. Questions?
I had a couple. This is drafted for seven members, and it's kind of mirrored after the state process, and they say no.
Right, right.
I think that one says a minimum of five.
Right.
So, you've got a planning board, a selectman member, and a Housing Trust.
And a Housing Authority member.
And then four residents. So, where did that seven come from, versus five? Sometimes I'm wondering if groups are too big.
We thought, since there were three members of boards, that, that there should be good representation from residents as well. So, that was the reason for seven.
So, these residents wouldn't be on any other boards or committees, pretty much?
They may not be, no.
Okay.
We were hoping, as you can see, we're looking for people having experience or expertise in housing, finance, municipal governance, or law. So, we were hopeful that we would get people that had some skills, would be very useful to the, to the trust. And then the, the Selectmen may appoint, or I guess we should say the Town Manager may appoint, any other town officials or staff. And I would expect that I would be charged with serving as staff for the trust, as an ex officio member, or whatever. And again, ex officio members don't vote, so that the, the will of the people is what's driving that bus, for lack of better words.
Okay. And then, just, just a quick follow-up question. If you, if you look at, I mean, there's three or four pages of process on this.
Right.
And it's, again, it probably mirrors a lot of the state, the municipal finance sections, how to transfer the land, the procurement act.
Right.
But the goals and objectives of the purpose of it, it simply says, "For the preservation of affordable housing in town for the benefit of low and moderate income persons." So, you know, if you, if you look at what's happening in the Fisher Street, 40B, so that would be close to the 10%, if not past it, plus the other two that are going on, so the town as a whole is getting past the 10%. Where's the expectations, or limits, or goals of what we're trying to do as a town? And it's probably, it's a, probably a broader question than this, but, you know, are these rental houses, are these owned by the town and leased out? What happens when you sell it? The 80% numbers, and the 30% of salary goes towards housing? How is that all defined in here?
I, I have no idea. That's why we want the trust to work on this. One of the ideas is that the Housing Authority is looking into buying property near Walnut Street, surplus state property. They received a grant from the state, and they're doing due diligence with that grant money. Some of the money may go to assist the Housing Authority in that project. There are communities which use the money for either moderate rehab for low-income people, so they can fix their homes up, or to help lower-income town employees with down payments on homes. So, there's a whole variety of things that can be done with the money. I don't know what the best use of the money is. I'm hopeful that the Housing Trust folks will...
So, this, this group of seven people would come up with those parameters?
Right.
And then how does that, so someone donates a couple hundred thousand, or a house, or a property, or what have you, by the time it comes in here, those goals will be set, and they will be documented?
I would think that that would be one of the first things the Housing Trust would need to do, the Board of Trustees, is to think about, you know, what, how broad a role they want to take. Do they want to be a bank, or do they want to be a developer, or do they want to function as a quasi-municipal board and be more of a policy board? I think they're gonna have to figure that out.
And then, when the assets come in, potentially, they could sit on it for five, or 10, or 20 years, or spend it yearly as it comes in. So, the, all those parameters are in process of...
Right, right.
Being thought about?
Right. The state law doesn't require that the monies be spent with any, within any specific time, but I would think the Chestnut Green developer, if his money's been sitting there for a couple of years, would...
Would want it used.
Would, I would think he'd come back to the town and say, "Use it or lose it."
Okay. And then, just, sorry to take up all the time. One other question. If somebody has an asset that they want to donate to the, this group, so it, it comes off of the tax base, okay, but that's not a, so for the town to accept that, is that a town meeting process, or is that a Selectmen process?
It says that the trust can accept and receive, and number one, their powers. Accept real property by gift, including money.
Okay, so, what am I concerned, because I've seen it in other towns where they take assets, or they, one, it comes off the tax rolls, and two, there may be issues with that property that the town...
Inherit some, some twenty...
So, that'd be concerned about the checks and balances working into the, somehow into that process of...
Well, I would assume that the town gift policy, where you guys are the ultimate acceptors.
Except, I think this may, I don't know, that's why I'm, I don't know if this overrides that.
Should we send it to Town Council with some really focused questions, Bill?
I think so.
And that would be one of them. I know John had a lot of questions two years ago.
I'll have to go back to my notes, but I know that was a long session. But I'm assuming we're gonna study this and ask more questions, and then, before we adopt it?
Oh, definitely, definitely.
Yeah, the purpose tonight was to get the discussion going, and to see, we're not looking for a vote tonight on the board, but just identify the concerns or the questions that you might have at this point. We'll certainly take more questions as they come along, if you have, even after tonight's discussion, if you have individual questions that you want to forward to me, we'll start looking into those things right away for you.
Yeah. And don't, I'm generally supporting of this. I thought from the beginning of the discussion, you had that July 16th date, 2016, I thought it was a little more aggressive, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
So, this, this, this doesn't preclude the trust from entering into public-private partnerships for affordable housing, working with DHCD, HUD, MHFA?
It does not. Habitat for Humanity, a lot of the, the municipal housing trusts work very closely with Habitat.
I was thinking this would be a good opportunity.
The only, the only thing I would, I would be concerned about is the length of the terms, because working with DHCD and HUD, MHFA, it's a lengthy process.
Right.
And to maintain continuity throughout that process, you want to have some overlapping terms with either the Chair, the Vice Chair, or the Clerk.
Well, Bill and I can work on that.
Yeah. Just because of, you know, pause it with MHFA or HUD, it could take anywhere from, from eight months to eighteen months.
Yeah. John?
You know, Sharon, originally, the, one of the original reasons for developing this Housing Trust was to be the, sort of the depository for the $320,000, because there's really no other place to put it. If it's sunsetted, say that happens, we, we don't agree, and it becomes either dormant or dissolved, what would happen to the money?
The money's in a, a planning board account, like our Recreation Mitigation Money, or other mitigation monies, would remain with the planning board, and I would think the planning board would be charged with figuring out what to do with the money.
Okay.
But the planning board has a very full plate with development and...
Just remind me, why did we put a sunset provision on this? I'm not recalling with clarity why we did that.
I, I think that was done because they didn't want, like, an, a perpetual housing trust. I think people had some concerns about that on the Advisory Committee. I remember going to the meetings, and this was the...
Yeah, I may have been one of them, I'm just saying.
Yeah, and this was the, the compromise, that there would be a sunset.
Okay, and would review it?
At that time.
At that time, okay.
At that time, and I, I spoke with Mr. Cutler before I came over, and we felt that, let's not wait for the May Annual next year. If we're gonna extend it, let's do it in the fall, so that it has continuity. But yes, I think you're right, Jenny, that, that people really thought that, there were a lot of questions, why do we need a trust? Why can't the existing boards, or the Housing Authority, or the planning board, or some of the existing boards do these projects?
Yeah, because it wasn't defined. I, I think some of the hesitation was on how aggressive the Housing Trust might be.
And I think, I looked at the list of communities, the first 61, and a good two-thirds of them are also Community Preservation Act towns, so that the Community Preservation Act requires that you spend a minimum of 10% for housing, a minimum of 10% for conservation, and a minimum of 10% for recreation, and then the final 70%, you can divvy up however you're, based on your town needs. And a lot of those communities, it seems like they set up municipal housing trusts to kind of help with the CPA issues, and we didn't have CPA, so that was another reason. We knew we had this one block of money that we need, that we would need to find a way to best spend, and that there wouldn't be an ongoing stream coming in.
Okay.
So, Sharon, then, once we, you know, send questions and then go through this document more, we can come back and talk about potential uses of the existing monies?
Monies. Yeah. You would, I would think the next step, once we get the regulations the way you want them, you'd adopt the regulations, you'd charge Bill with appointing a committee, requires a member of the Board of Selectmen to be on that committee, and then start thinking about what we're gonna do with the money.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does this trust restrict the people who can, who will be housed? Does this restrict them in any way, that it has to be a longstanding Foxborough resident, or...
As, it's, it's neutral with regard to residency.
Is that, does it have to be neutral, or can it be restricted to Foxborough residents only?
If you look at the 40B regulations for the comprehensive permits, 70% of the units can be for Foxborough residents, so I would think that that would be the maximum that we could do, would be to mirror the 40B language.
Because I think that was also one of the concerns of the Advisory Committee, was that the state would come in and say, "All right, you, you're gonna house these people, whether you like it or not."
This is a lo...
And I think that was...
This is a local housing trust...
Yeah, okay.
Addressing local needs with local money. And the only way the state would get involved is if, as, as Dave has suggested, we, David suggested, we go to the state or the federal government for funds.
Right, okay.
But as long as we're spending our own money in our own town.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so, I think if anyone on the board is interested in volunteering for this, please let Bill know directly, and then we can talk about that at one of our next meetings. And we'll send our questions to Bill.
Yep. Or see, you can see him at the show as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks very much.
I really appreciate the time.
Thanks, Sharon.
Thanks, Sharon.
Next item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the Water and Sewer Commission. We are going to have a discussion on some warrant articles for our Spring Town Meeting. You want to come on up?
How is everyone?
Hey, well, thanks.
Oh, you're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Very good, thank you.
Is it snowing up?
Yeah, about an inch an hour. So, I know, I guess a couple of guys are anxious to go. Anyhow, I know we had two placeholders for warrant articles. One is an article for people who have submitted their property lots to be voted on, to be included in a sewer service area within the town, which we have. The other one is, the genesis of this is, we have a, a new special counsel reviewing everything. He was not happy with the acts of, is it 2012?
13.
2012, I think, when we, we're doing the DPW. He went through, we, at the time, we had a council, we went... He went through, uh, we, at the time, uh, we had a, a counsel, we went through it, might have raised a couple of eyebrows, but we were told it was, you know, standard form. New guy came in and said, no, I don't like it, he wants it more exacting. And, uh, we had him, uh, draft the, the change, and, uh, submit it, so. That's basically, um, the housekeeping items that we wanted.
So.
So fire away.
So Mike, could you just give, um, some more information about, you know, exactly the area that, you know, just for the public to hear, the, uh, area that this is focused on, and in terms of, you know, the relationship between the two boards and authority, that's what this is about? If you could give some more detail.
Yes, basically, okay, here's the deal, you know, I'm gonna put it in plain English, we formed the DPW. So at the time, the Water and Sewer Commissioner said, okay, we will cede all of our authority over employees to be under the, the Town Manager Act. And that was basically it, and then we retained everything that they had for the last thirty years. It is the opinion of our counsel that the original draft was, uh, too vague, and he wanted to tighten it up. So it's, I can read it, it's pretty simple. Section three, "The executive powers of the town shall be vested in the Board of Selectmen." As the Act referred to as the Board of Selectmen, "Who shall have the rights and powers given to boards of selectmen by general laws, except for those executive powers granted to the town manager." And, except for those, and this is a change, the rest, this is all underlined, "And except for those executive powers granted to the town's Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners by chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six." Provided, however, that all personnel and collective bargaining powers of the Water and Sewer Commissioners shall be vested in the town manager. That's the deal. I don't have the original, uh, what was actually passed, but, uh, the, the new guy didn't like it, and this was his submission to make it clear this is going on. So that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Well, maybe I can, I can offer a little more clarification, so, so for everybody's benefit here, that there were, there were a number of things that actually occurred over, over, over many years. Nineteen eighty-six was the, the first enabling legislation that allowed the, the sewer water commissions to be established, which gave them essentially a full authority, executive authority over, over handling water and sewer matters for the town. Um, and that's the chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six. In two thousand and ten, actually, two thousand and four, if I'm not mistaken. Two thousand and four, there was, there was, the, the Town Manager Act came into play, which then established the executive authority, uh, for the Board of Selectmen, and also the authorities vested in the town manager. Uh, which also still, it was, it wasn't really clear as to what, how it affected on nineteen, the nineteen eighty-six act, it wasn't really thoroughly addressed. In two thousand and ten.
Can I, can I just quote that? There is a, a quote in that, um, the two thousand and four Special Act to have selectmen, town manager, former government, and in that, it says, "To the extent that this act modifies or repeals existing general laws or special acts or bylaws of the town of Foxborough, this act shall govern." So this supersedes any, um, special acts or town.
In two thousand and four?
This is, yeah, the, the, um, select, the Town Manager Selectmen Act in two thousand and four.
Okay. All right, in two thousand and ten, there was an amendment to the, uh, to, to the act as well, and that further, um. Actually, it, it, it more or less mirrored similar to the two thousand and four language, it wasn't, there wasn't a whole lot of change there either. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen, however, there was a clear change in terms of how that actually, how the authority was changed. It was, it said that the authority, executive authority vested with the, the town manager and the, uh, and the Board of Selectmen, and, um, and actually, it seemed as though it actually took away some of the authority of the Water and Sewer Commission at that time. What this would effectively do, if I'm not mistaken, is to, is to put the powers back as they were established in nineteen eighty-six, into, into the Town Manager Act.
Basically, yeah, yeah.
So, um, and with respect to how that, how that affects things, is that, right now, the, the, the Water and Sewer Commission actually has authority over the, the, the handling of the water, all water and sewer matters, including the, the selling of, of, uh, of, of sub- ditch rights, and, um, and the expansion of districts and things of that nature, which still goes back to town meeting, expand the district. And also busy, busy ability to contract for services as well. What happened with the two thousand and ten act, which was really establishing of the, of the, the MFN, which is the, 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 the Regional Sewer Authority. That, uh, that created a whole new set of authorities, which complicated it even further, and so the, the two thousand and thirteen act attempted to try and clear that up a little bit more, but in fact, based upon the reading of the council, your present council, actually, actually limited, limited the authority of the board. So that's the purpose of the request, is to, is to put the authority back in the hands of the Sewer Water Commission. However, if you take a look at the, if you read the actual act that was done in two thousand and thirteen, it actually referenced back to the, the two thousand, the nineteen eighty-six actions.
Right, you want me to read it?
Well, yeah, well, but I, I, I think that the point in that was that, it makes, it makes me believe, as I read that, that there, there clearly was an intent when they did that.
Well, the intent was clear, it's just, it's, uh, again, that maybe you get overloyed.
And it, uh. I wasn't here, obviously, so.
Yeah.
I can't really comment on that.
Well, you did, you had a couple of moving parts, you obviously had the, uh, and the municipal agreement going on, you're trying to form the DPW, something got dropped. You know, I've got one attorney who says everything's fine, I've got another attorney who says I want to tighten it up.
Can I read that language? Can I read, this is, in two thousand and thirteen, the Town Manager's Act was amended, it's chapter one, seven, thirty of the Acts of two thousand and thirteen. And in that, it says, and this is quoted from the, from the amendment, "The town of Foxborough shall be governed by this act. To the extent that this act is now in conflict with, with any general or special law, including, but not limited to, chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six, or the bylaws of the town of Foxborough, this act shall govern." The, the, chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six is what established the DPW, and what gave, what gave you executive authority. What this amendment does is it takes away that, that executive authority, and says that what you have to do is you have, the, the selectmen still retain, or town managers retain the, the.
The town, yeah, that's Steve's, uh, interpretation, that, because that was in there, it would have trumped, because it's a town manager.
Right. Yeah, and this was. Right. Right, but this was, but that was done, well, no, that was done, putting that language in.
That was not the intent. That's why we're here.
Which makes the, the Act of two thousand and thirteen trump the Act of nineteen eighty-six, and that was done purposely because, because it was specifically noted, chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six. So that was done, that was done, there was a reason that was put in there. And so what this means, because of this, this means that the Water and Sewer can't unilaterally contract the sale of flow outside the town borders, it needs the approval of the Board of Selectmen. And this is the same, and this is the same checks and balances to, that, to govern, well, this would, this is the same checks and balances that would govern sale of flow outside the border, because your MFN allows the town to sell flow to a neighboring town. It allows that, right.
Right. We're currently doing that, right.
But right now, but this, this would allow, there would be a checks and balance of what is sold outside the town, the same way there's a checks and balance in what is, when people want to join the district inside the town, they have to go to town meeting, which is your town warrant. So I think this was purposely done, so there would be a checks and balance down the road when the sewer, uh, thing came, came to fruition. And I think this was far, um, I don't think it was an accident, I think it wa, it was done on purpose, for checks and balances.
Well, I disagree. It clearly was not the intent of what we intended to do.
Well, it's.
So, so you can't pull that out of thin air.
Well, it's not, so, so it's, I'm not pulling it out of thin air, it's not just, it's not just a, it's not just a housekeeping issue, you're actually.
No, no, the part, it wasn't done intentionally. Sure is.
Well, no, wait a minute, Michael.
No, no.
What you're doing is, you're, it's kind of a protection for the town, just like it's a protection for the town when you go, when, when someone inside the town wants to join the, um, the, uh, Water and Sewer District. It goes for town meeting approval. What this does, if you change it the way you want to change it, that means Water and Sewer can unilaterally make, make, uh, con, make contracts with outside the town entities.
As we always have, you want to walk back thirty years of how we've been doing things?
No.
If this language was in here, would you have said no? See, I disagree that this was done intentionally.
Well, when you don't, when you, when you do, when you, when you have an amendment to, uh, when you, amendment, things don't get in there by accident, things are put in there purposely, and the language says, well, like I said, to, um, "In conflict with any general or special law, including, but not limited to, chapter forty-six of the Acts of nineteen eighty-six." That wasn't done on a whim, that was done for a reason.
Well, did you do it, because I didn't?
No, I didn't do it.
I didn't do it.
I don't know, I don't know who wrote that, but you know what? In my mind, it's a checks, it's a check and balance, just like for the outside the border sales, just like the town meeting approval is for the inside, and you have to remember, this thing was sold, this, your, your sewer business. Was, was approved by the town, I mean, knowing, the, the town meeting wanted to know that they had a say. And that was why the provision was put in there, that town meeting had to approve, uh, joining the, the sewer district inside the town.
That, and what's more important is they wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna go shoving bediments down people's throats and trying to force sewer where no one wanted it.
Yes. Yes.
So this was really frosting on the cake.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, no, 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 I understand.
But then again, Jenny, there is the, the reasonableness test of how we're gonna pay for all this.
Can I just ask some questions here, because, because I think Mr. May may help clarify some things. So based upon the way the current language reads, how do you, how does that impede your ability to do your job as, as your, from, from the commission's perspective?
As far as we're concerned, based on the prior opinion that we got on this, we don't agree with Jenny, that the intent is clear.
No, but how does it? How does it effectively, how does it impact your ability to do your job, what, what, what limits your ability?
I don't know. You know, we, we never really get into it, I mean, it was one of these things, hey, if you don't want someone nipping at your ankles, do this, because someone, uh, could make a stink out of this, that's Steve's opinion.
Mike, if you never get into it, why are you asking for a change, if you haven't debated it?
The opinion was that it could strip authority, all the authority of the.
Oh, this is, this is a lawyer's opinion, is this the opinion of the board? Do you, do you all share this opinion?
We're doing as instructed, basically, he came in and, again, we had one lawyer, because, and we, we read this too, and he said, no, that's standard form, that's the way, okay, fine, another guy comes in and says, you know, no, it could be construed the way Jenny's construing it, exactly. So he said, no, this is the deal, this is the intent, and this was the language, so I'll give this to you, you put it in, and, and, uh, go back and amend it. So that's where we're at.
Yeah, no, Michael, the, um, he said, the, it, your lawyer was very good, I mean, what he presented, his memo was excellent, you know, reading, but even he said that you don't have unilateral, unilateral authority to do contracts. That's, that's what he said, so, your, what you want to do, that's why he presented the warrant article, and that's his cure for, for your so-called problem.
So, over the years, the, the Water and Sewer Board has always handled the flow issues, the contracting issues, all those things, and at, at any time, what, and, since two thousand and thirteen has, what has, what, what role has the board played in any of that? The Board of Selectmen?
I don't believe.
Has it been any role at all?
We have not, we've never had any role.
All right, so that's, that's really my question, is that, if, based upon the way the current language reads, how does it impact your ability, or is it, does it affect your plans to do something else, or for instance?
It may, I mean, I, I don't know, again, no one's, uh, really, you know, made an issue out of it, so.
One, one question could be that if the, if the issue of trying to sell, uh, flow to another, another community comes up, the way the current language reads is that you could theoretically, you could, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen would have to make that decision.
I think you have to make that decision.
Well, the Board of Selectmen, because it doesn't say, it doesn't say that I make, I make the decision relative to personnel and collective bargaining, but it says, I think the, the executive authority rests with the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
All right, so, to be clear about that. So, I guess the question is, that if you change this language, that decision would rest, would revert back to the Sewer, Water and Sewer Board. So, I guess the, there's a, there's a fundamental question there, is that too much authority for one board to have? In other words, to put, to put that level of authority in one board versus something that's so significant, should that be something that's perhaps the town meeting should act on? If you're selling flow outside the community, is that something that the town meeting should actually vote on versus, versus anyone board, to take that authority on? I mean, that's, that's a question I would have about that. And, and, now, having said that, based on the normal operations, I'm not sure why you'd want to change it the way it's working. In other words, the, the Water and Sewer Commission has authority to do contracts, they have the ability to do their, their operations on a day-to-day basis, but when it comes to fundamental questions such as selling flow that you, that we've all tried hard, not me, but the, the community's tried hard to get that flow for, for a number of years, selling it to another community is, is, is a, is a bit of a controversial issue. So I think you'd want to have a, a higher authority when you're in that situation, that's just my thought.
Mike, a question, say, say, say that hypothetical case came up, and I think I read in the notes that there was something about, uh, selling flow to Sharon Commons, I don't even know if they're still around, but, say that came up.
Yes.
Do you have a problem with, with, with running that by the Board of Selectmen, or even taking that to town meeting? Is that, is that too high a hurdle?
Only in that, uh, the cleaner can make the deal, I think, easier. In other words, we have the authority, we get approached all the time, and if we're trying to sell flow, is, is it a timing issue?
Let me ask it another way.
Go ahead.
Do you, do you have an issue with getting input from the community on, on decisions like that, that could impact our ability to develop, uh, a better commercial base?
No.
You don't have, you don't have a problem with getting input from the community?
No, I don't, because I, I think when the community finds out that we've got to pay for this somehow, they'd probably, okay, let me give it to you in a nutshell, in order for us to get a seat at the table, we probably had to commit for more gallonage than we could reasonably expect to sell. So, we were nervous about going in and buying what we had to, anyhow, at the same time, that opened up what we'll just refer to as some sequestered gallonage. So in our opinion, given the fact that we cannot levy bediments, we cannot force mains down, we've got to sell flow to any willing party. And, uh, if we don't, I mean, here's the real bottom line, John, if we don't meet our financial obligations, the sewer enterprise account goes into receivership, and it will go on the tax base. Now, do you want us to put that millstone on his neck, or do you want us to fight our way out of it?
We all know, we all know that you've got a pretty big nut coming up in a few years.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, those are the stakes. So I, naturally, we want maximum flexibility to do whatever we can do to protect the thousand existing customers we have, because the whole deal here was, if we buy the expansion, hopefully, we can dollar-cost average and soften the impact costs of the rehabilitation of the existing plant on the existing thousand people.
But when the town, when the town voted for this, you know, expanded sewer district, they, they were voting for sewerage for Foxborough, they were voting for sewerage to expand our commercial base. They, they, nowhere in their mind did they ever envision that some of this flow would be sold to Sharon.
I would say this, a big part of what we sell is already in Sharon.
Maybe so.
And, you know, I mean, it, it happens all the time, so it's, and that's, you know, it's just the way it is, and we sell water to Mansfield, Mansfield, so it's all the way to Sharon.
Yeah, but, but once you sell flow to Sharon. Right, but once you sell it to Sharon, you're, you're, you're then limiting, um, the amount of economic growth that the town can get from that.
That's the, you know, so that's the, uh, a great discussion to have. Really, what, you know, what do we have? What is the likelihood of what is actually sellable? And, and that's, I'm not going to have it tonight, but boy, that's, that's a discussion I'm, I'm always wanting to have.
That's a huge question. Cause once it's sold, it's sold.
Right.
And it's finite. So the thing is to, you know, that, that's why we're, I'm, I'm saying personally that involvement by the board of selectmen, involvement by the community, even if you have to go to town meeting, it involves the town. Because th- this sewer district was to bring some, some, I'd say, long overdue new life into the downtown section and into the, uh, the Route one forty section. And if, if that begins to get sold away, uh, pretty soon, it's, you know, you, you don't really have enough to make a substantial impact for a number of years. So that's why I was saying, why, why don't you want to, why do you want to change it?
Again, I want maximum flexibility. You know, why, why?
Okay, well.
Anyhow, go ahead.
I think we can get to the same spot. I think, I understand your point and I, 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 I actually commend you for thinking of, you know, that, hey, look, we gotta, we gotta make sure we're protecting the, the rates here and, and, and protecting the investment here. I think the concern, as I hear it, and I've heard it, uh, a number of different levels, is the fact that if we act too quickly and sell, sell that capacity now and we miss an opportunity later on to need that, where we need that capacity, um, I think that's, that's a challenge for us. However, the, the other, the other side of it would be that if in fact it gets the, gets down to the final wire and you need to sell that capacity so that we keep the rate down, I think that, I think a lot of people will listen to that.
Well, if you miss the opportunity, the, the result could be worse.
That's understandable, but I think the, uh, the, the issue, it's, it's a little bit of a gamble. I understand that, but by the same token, you know, what, I think Mr. Graham makes a good point that this capacity was sold to the town for being Foxborough's capacity. And then taking it to another community at this junction creates a bit of a concern. It's a, it's a timing issue, Mike. And I, and I, I appreciate what you're saying and I know what you, what the concern that you're, you're, you're dealt with. And I, I, I share that concern, but I'm not sure I agree on the method of how we get there. But, but one way of looking at it is, is that you, you know, you both have that authority to, to have that conversation right now. And then, you know, if you agree on, on the method and how it gets done, you know, the only question is, and, and I understand the concern about going to town meeting, because town meeting only happens once, twice a year. The timing of that isn't such that it works, that, that's a challenge too. So I hear, I hear that.
Well, I imagine if you were selling flow, it'd be for a large project. And large projects don't, don't happen overnight either. I mean, there's, there's, I, I, there's enough time. I'm just saying, you know.
No, uh, happy, that we've, uh, I'm happy to have that conversation.
I, I think we should, really, I think we should.
I think we've had it internally.
Yeah.
No, but you, we need to go through, you know, what you're, what you're faced with down the road. I think we know that, but also the, the financing structure, what you think you might have excess flow, because we don't know.
Right.
Where that flow, uh, was originally earmarked to go, which was downtown and Route one forty and Foxfield Plaza and so on. And, and the thing is, if, if the first act after this is to sell flow to an out-of-town entity, you go, timeout. We, we've got to stop and think about this.
That's fair.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's more of a strategic discussion at this point.
Yeah, again, we've done, uh, you know, again, going, going into, we spent almost two years trying to whittle down what our buy-in would be. Because we were nervous, again, about, you know, given how we're exposed here, as to how to pay for it. So, um, I think in pretty short order, we can, we can show you the likely.
But that discussion, the how to pay for it?
Yeah.
We need to review that as well. Cause the rate payers can't be paying for all that.
No, I mean, that's the whole, I mean, they're, they're going to get wiped out if we don't get going.
So I think we need to.
And money, you know, the sooner we get the money, the safer they'll be. I mean, it really, you know, statistics and probability is, you know, you know, we all know the town here. And, you know, think, think that some of these little subdivisions are ever going to get together and run a pipe down there. It's, it's not going to happen. You've got some critical needs areas around the center of town, which we work with the planning board and that's designated and that's an identifiable quantity. I mean, geez, we've, we've had more conversations, uh, that I can remember really with some of the smaller developers. But, um, no one's been, no one's, John, no, no one's been running in with a checkbook. So that's, uh, concerning to us.
But in the current sort of checks and balances relationship that exists today, uh, these discussions can take place. I don't see, you know, if there was something of, of urgency, I don't think, uh, you know, we, we could at least take a look at it and see if, uh, town meeting or even, uh, input from the board of selectmen could help out the process. But I'm, I'm never one for, you know, unilateral, if I can say it right, authority. Uh, I, I think, you know, the, the more the community talks to itself, uh, the better the outcome.
And, and I think, no, and, and I think, Michael, there's an expectation of, of, um, presenting, um, projects to, to the town, you know, in regard to, um, like I said, in, in town, they have, the town meeting has to approve people hooking up to the sewer district inside the town. And I think there's an expectation by the, the townspeople that they will know what is being sold, where it's being sold to. You know, I mean, they, they just expect that.
I'm happy to give them the facts.
So, so the thing is.
Once they find out if we blow this, they're paying for it. I think it'll be a real interesting discussion.
And, and I understand, and I under.
That, that brings people to the table.
Yeah, yeah. However, all, but I, I think people want to feel, have a, have a comfort zone, a comfort level in regard to what the water and sewer is doing with the flow that, that they have. I mean, the expectation of the townspeople is that this was a town, this was for the town. The expectation was not, it's also, it's for the neighboring town to help them develop their economic, economic areas, uh, to better their, to give them an economic base. Well, what about the economic base in the town of Foxborough? That's what they, that's what they're going to look at. And it may turn out, wait a minute, wait.
I think there'll be plenty.
Yeah, but, but it may turn out that what the Sharon project is looking for is considerably, you know, not that bad, but at least it'll be presented and people will know that. You know, they're just looking for a little openness.
I think, I think what, I think there's a way to address this and, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, but the, the, my thought is, is that you develop a strategy on how you intend to get rid of the, the flow, or the, or sell the flow. And I'm going to get rid of it, but sell the flow. And, and the strategy is that so much of that needs to be set aside for the, the economic development viability of this community. And so much can be potentially, and if there is still some left over after that, that, that must be sold in order to make the payment or make, to make the, the obligations. I think that's something that can be talked about at that point. But at this point, it becomes an open discussion as to what's the best way to deal with this. Because I think putting it all on you is, is it, is a difficult thing to do anyways, personally. I think this is an important issue for the entire town to wrestle with. Is that, you know, because it took a lot of time to get to where you got today with that, with the, the MFN degree, agreement. And I think it's a really a great achievement by this community. I think the last thing you want to do is turn around and say, okay, we're going to act quickly to, to, and then use that, sir, that, to, just to pay off the note. I understand why, I get it completely. That's, I think it's a, it's a, it's a really good point that you raise. But we should have a strategy. And I think that's really the key.
I, I, I think what the, the first thing we have to identify is what's the capacity? Okay?
Yeah.
What's the expected use for the town of Foxborough? Whatever's excess as saleable, the, the Water and Sewer Commission should have the, the flexibility to be able to sell that. Because when, when developers come in and say, look, I need, I need a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day worth of flow, oh, you got to wait six months to go to town meeting, they're going to go to Plan B or they're going to go someplace else.
Right.
So it, it is a lost opportunity, but I think we have to be very careful that we don't, we don't sell our expected usage. So, um, I, I think we can get there. I think we work together on that. And if we, if we set aside saleable flow, they have, you know, freedom to, to sell what, what they need to sell. But if they want to go above that, then they have to either go to town meeting or to selectmen. So I, I, I think we can get there.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I think when you see the numbers, uh, will be agreement very quickly.
But, but Michael.
Mike, can you guys come back with sort of a, a presentation with details?
We need a strategy discussion.
We'll get our guys, we'll get our guy and see how it goes.
No, I think in, in this forum.
Well, let me ask you this. Is it, well, we're going to, let's get back to what we're here for. Let's go, now it's my understanding that neither of these, they're, they're placeholder currently.
Oh, they're, they're still, they're still.
Are these on the warrant or not?
These placeholders.
Yeah, placeholder.
We felt, we felt them on.
So it's safe to say that the sewer service area map, that's on?
Yes.
And this, we're going to table.
All right, I think we need to discuss that more.
Okay, fine.
Doesn't mean it's off.
What's the timeframe?
And it could be, it could be altered, that's the other side of that. Now, what is the timeframe?
What do we have a timetable, table here?
It's not going to, not going to have much time.
Can I back up a minute?
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this legislation doesn't just, we're, we're kind of kicking around a hypothetical here about selling sewer to a different town. Cause my understanding through special counsel was without this amended, we essentially, the board of water and sewer commissioners essentially has no authority.
No, not, not the way, not the way.
That's the way it was presented to us, that we would have to work through the board, the board of selectmen to make any decisions, any authorizations. And I think that's the overall issue.
No, I thought, I thought Steve, when he was, presented his memo, he said, yes, the, the MFN agreement allows the towns, Mansfield, Norton and Foxborough to sell flow to surrounding communities. It does allow that. So you, so you, you can do that. However, the legis, the, as, as it's written, you, you can't do, you cannot, water and sewer can't do unilateral contract. You have to come to the board of selectmen and present it and, and work with the board of selectmen. This doesn't mean that you can't sell things. You can't sell it. I mean, we're not, we're not saying, no, 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 you can't, you can't do that. What we're, what we're saying is, according to this, to the two thousand thirteen Town Manager Act amendment, amendment, that you don't have unilateral, unilateral authority. You have to work with the selectmen.
He's not here.
Steve's been tied up for over a month now between weather and a family issue. But the last it was presented, my understanding of it was all authorities to the Water and Sewer Commission have been overrun by this act.
I understand his point. He made, he makes a valid point. That there is a, and, and from a practical perspective, I'm not sure the board of selectmen wants to be acting on every single contracting effort that the board, that the board wants to take. However, with respect, I think the broad, the, the broad-based issue of selling capacity outside the community is a different issue. And I think that's something that we really need to visit high. It's possible to amend that language and, and achieve the goal that they want to get to, provided that there is language addressing sale of outside, sale of capacity to outside communities, outside the communities.
Well, if you sell it to the inside, you still have to have town meeting, town meeting approval to, to expand the district. But within the district, you don't have to have approval. That's, so you, you can.
That's what, that's what, that's what he's saying, is that you may not have the authority based on the current amendment. That they, they have to, every single request for selling of, of, of capacity would have to come back to the board for approval.
But I think that's why we have to take, take a pass at that amendment.
Right, exactly. That's why it requires further evaluation.
Right, and so we just received.
What we can do is, we've got, uh, former town engineer and he, he had pulled together a lot of stuff. And we're trying to figure out what was a reasonable amount for us to purchase. So we, we can really just show you guys the likely places it would go, where the infrastructure is, what the gallonage is and what we feel is clearly excess capacity. So I think we can get to your point pretty quick.
That'd be great, if we can do it.
Yeah.
I think that, that would be within the expectations of the, of the townspeople who voted for this, you know, the sewer, the sewer district. I think they just want to feel comfortable with what's happened, with what's happened with the sale of the flow.
Well.
The, I think we get, we, I think the first order of business is to make sure that we're clear on what that language says and what it's intended to do. And so I think getting, getting with Steve and perhaps new town council, Pakistan, the two of them can get together and figure that out. And then we'll make a report back to the next meeting on that.
Yeah.
So we're clear on that piece at least.
Can we do that in two weeks?
Yeah, we can, we should be able to do that.
Uh, and look, in a perfect world, we would have had our attorney here with us tonight.
Yeah, he's been, I, I've reached out to him.
Yeah, he, uh, depth in the family, he's really had to step in and, uh, pick up, uh, his brother's a lawyer. He's had to pick up some things and straighten out his practice. So between that and weather, we, you know, we've been flying blind with him for a month. Really, in a perfect world, uh, we wouldn't have taken this meeting without him being here. But I know, you know, you, you have the same constraints with time and we got to keep going on this schedule for town meetings. So here we are. I hope we can, uh.
I, I think, you know, having that kind of discussion, just to refresh all the information would be really helpful. Give information to the public also, but I think we should probably, uh, make a motion to put the, um, additional.
Service district.
Expansion sites.
You used the right words here, yes. Sewer service area. Yeah.
It's to amend the sewer service area map to include the offices that are shown on.
Okay.
I don't think there's any, any concern with that.
No.
Can you, can you just give a brief explanation? Is this, we've had a placeholder for this, but is this the information that just came when we got here tonight?
Yes.
So.
During the year, we've been collecting.
Is this, I'm sorry, there's like nine addresses or these locations? We, I don't think we have seen this before, an hour ago.
All these, all these people are people who are, who are on sewer, who are fronting on sewer mains now. And all of them are, uh, have come in and registered their names to connect to the sewer. And we, we put together the article as was contemplated at the town meeting when we adopted the sewer service area map. Uh, and we put it in as a sort of an on-the-bus article that would be voted, just like the budget, where you would read the article and then people could hold if they didn't want to, uh, deal with one of the entities that are on the list. And we could explain that and pass the others that don't get, you know, call, don't get a flag, don't get called.
So, so Roger, just, I'll grab, so Forty-four Moore Street. You're saying there's a gravity line that goes in front of their house, but the fact that they're physically not connected, they're not in that district?
They're not in the district because when we created the district map, we only selected two different entities. People who are already in the district that already had sewer and the designated area around the common that the planning board requested us to designate.
Okay.
That's the only items that are on that sewer service area map right now.
So the, so the town votes to, through warrant article to add these into the district, these different residences?
Exactly.
So the logistics, that the next step is outside of the warrant article, but the construction and.
Then they have to buy capacity, that's number one.
Yep.
Then they have to construct a connection, which they pay for. And, and then they enliven it after it's inspected and duly authorized by us. That's the way it works.
Are these a mix of commercial and residential?
Almost all residential, except for one thirty-one Moore Street, which is a small business near the bleachery. It's in back of the bleachery, as a matter of fact.
Thank you.
So Roger, going forward, I mean, this, this is, could happen with regularity.
We would anticipate that, um, people who are already on sewer, there's a great demand with residences right now. There isn't, we don't have any commercial demand right now, other than that little place on the bleachery. But I would anticipate every town meeting, even the specials, we will have an article that mirrors this article. Because it may be only one or two, but if they're on sewer, there's no point in delaying them if they want to hook up, you know?
So they're all exist, I assume that they're all existing septic systems that either failed or they're taking the opportunity before it fails to connect in.
Or near fielded, Jim, yeah. And on sewer.
Can I just ask a question? If, if, is this sort of a moving target though, Roger? Or is, or do you anticipate, are there maybe additional ones between now and actual town meeting day?
Uh, no, uh, we could amend on town meeting floor if we had one come in between now and town meeting.
Okay.
There is some pent-up demand and, and I can just tell you that we're trying to get a grant to do a pilot project on Market Street, which would serve the entire west side of the common, as well as the Market Street people and the people nearby that are, that are having problems. They have postage stamp lots, failed septic systems, they can't do anything but go to tight tanks. And there's no way to put a septic system in that'll operate properly because, you know, it just, the lot's not big enough. There's no, no reserve area, no capacity available. But if we can do a pilot project there, we might be able to sell enough capacity between that and hooking up the whole fire station area and that. So it, it makes it saleable by the town. It gives stores like where you're located, Jim, the ability to hook up. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a worthy. And, you know, it's, it's a worthy project if you can do it with grant money.
So, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but you've got two processes. One is a town meeting warrant article where you solicit, you're petitioning the town to say yes.
Yes.
I guess it's one vote for all of these?
On the bus, but you can object.
Okay.
Yeah.
Verse the legal rights, if, say the town says no, say if you've got a, in a butter, a piece of property that wants to tie in, goes to town meeting, town meeting says no. What's the legal right for these people?
I don't know the legal aspects of that, so I, I wouldn't wanna comment on it, but I would guess that, that, you know, if you're on, that was the vote at town meeting. If they're on sewer and they're not yet hooked up, they, they have the right to request to be hooked up.
You mean if they're on septic?
Yeah, I don't mean, I mean if they front on a sewer line, yeah. If there's sewer available.
Yeah.
Say that, yeah. And, you know, all of these are in that category, so. But what happens if somebody outside of that area tries to buy, to get on? We're not gonna allow them to even petition, because, you know, there's nothing near that they can hook up to, unless they're willing to build the infrastructure.
Unless there's a forty B project, Roger.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you gotta be careful of what was, 'cause if, what I'm getting at is, if the town has sewer, whether you're near it, abutting it, a mile from it, there, there's a legal process, and there's this process. And I'm wondering how the two matches, that's all. 'Cause there, there could be issues on both sides of this.
Other than the forty B part, for sure. But.
Thank you.
Okay, so, in two weeks, we'll get back together?
Well, I think the, the plan for, for two weeks would be to have at least the two lawyers get together and give us an opinion as to how, what this all means, and what this, and what we can do, what we, what we should be doing, what we, what we can do. Clarify that at least, and then for the thirty-first, we can have an actual strategy discussion about the details, the numbers, things of that nature, so we can have the opportunity to get through that, see where it takes us. Does that seem fair?
I think it's doable.
Yeah?
Should, should we invite the Board of Selectmen to our meeting for that date?
Yeah, we can do that too. Let's get the information and we can work out the details.
Could have to be, you change your meeting dates to Tuesdays, right?
Temporarily.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, very good, the chase is on, all right.
A word of caution to everybody, the Sanders are out.
Is it that bad outside right now?
It's all pretty good right now.
Okay.
Ginny, do you wanna make a motion about the sewer service area map? To accept as a warrant?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept as a warrant article the, from the Water and Sewer Department, the revised sewer service area map.
Please do, okay, all right.
In the discussion, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for this tonight, only 'cause we just got it at six-thirty. It's with a bunch of other stuff from the attorneys. If this can wait for two weeks, I'd rather have this as one discussion. I don't like voting on something we just get handed.
We just got it tonight ourselves.
Yeah. I withdraw my motion, okay?
We do our time, I think we.
That's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item is Bob Cutler, the town clerk, to discuss tenure of office.
Hello.
Good evening. Hi, Bob.
How's everybody doing?
Doing well.
Good.
You?
So I've been talking with Mary Beth and Bill about petitioning to get tenure of office, and there's a statute forty-one nineteen B, which allows someone in the position who's been there at least five years to petition. You have to get five percent of the registered voters to sign the petition, and then it gets placed on the ballot. The petition has to be filed at least sixty days before the annual town election, which meant I had to file them by tomorrow. They've been filed as of Monday, and I've got the five percent. So I, I've been talking with Mary Beth about this, you know, as soon as she got here, because the Westwood Town Clerk went through the process last year, and she received tenure. And I've been debating back and forth whether I wanted to go that route, or an appointed route. And after discussions with Bill and Mary Beth, I thought the best way to approach it was this route, so. It would be on the ballot as opposed to town meeting warrant, because that's the way the statute is set up, and it's a yes or no vote, and if it gets voted favorably, then I, as the incumbent, would have tenure during my time in the office. And then, when I retire, then it would go back to being an elected position. It still remains elected, but they would, the new person would have to run for election.
Okay.
So this essentially means that you don't have to run every time?
Correct.
Every time, your, your, your term is, is consecutive until you decide to retire?
Correct.
And it's the, the mandatory retirement age is seventy?
Seventy, i- if, if you wanted to do it beyond seventy, you'd have to run for election again.
I see.
But, you know, I don't plan to be working till I'm seventy, so.
So Bob, the process is now done, you have the requisite number of signatures?
Well, we're in the process of certifying now, they started that today, they're certified by the Board of Registars. I've not been involved in the certification of these signatures. One of the registrars sat with my staff today, and they started, they will be done th- this week, because they have to certify within five days of filing.
Yeah, the only, the only thing is, I, I called Bill last Saturday, I was presented with the petition, and I thought it was your nomination papers.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And it's one of these, you know, I, I'd like to live in a world of no surprises, and I was surprised. I had no knowledge of this ahead of time.
Okay, and, yeah, I'll tell you exactly why. When I was going through the process, I thought I would have until November sixteenth to get all the nominate, all of the petitions signed, just as the nominations are for town election, and I realized it, you have to have it sixty days before the election. And when I figured that out, I had two weeks to get it done. So I didn't wanna make a big deal of it in case I did not come up with the signatures. You know, I didn't wanna, you know, basically put myself in a position of being embarrassed, because I couldn't get the signatures I needed. So that's why I, I was keeping it on the low, so I could go out and do my work and get the signatures.
I also admittedly thought this is, this is gonna be an article, not, not an election issue. So I thought it was gonna come forward as a town meeting article, and then when I didn't see the article, I thought you just decided not to do it. And then, and then it came through as, as an election, and so that, that was, that was my fault for not understanding that, that forward.
Now, are you gonna have to campaign for this position? I mean, how, how do you, how do you get your message across to the taxpayer that this is a good idea?
The ballot question, the, the statute tells you what you have to put on the ballot, and that was on the petition, if, if the person I showed it to, you should've explained that to you.
After the fact, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So it says right on there exactly what the question says, and how it will appear on the ballot, and so.
Is it just, I'm sorry, Bob, is this just that one line that's under the mast, under the statute?
Yeah.
It says, shall the city or town of Foxborough vote to accept the provisions of the section nineteen B of Charter, forty-one of the general bylaws, and therefore provide permanent tenure for, Bob, the present incumbent in the office of Foxborough Clerk?
And that's what it will say.
That's, that's the only thing it'll say.
And then it'll have a yes or a no.
Okay.
Bob, how many municipalities in the Commonwealth have adopted this?
I'm not sure the exact number, I know Westwood has it now, Free Town has it now, Sharon had it, Westwood's done it the last three times, the last three town clerks.
Westwood's last, two town clerks.
You know, there's a handful of others, I'm not sure exactly, but I do know that, you know, half of the towns are appointed. So, you know, it cuts down your numbers, and then you have to be in at least for five years before you can even attempt it. And there's been a lot of turnover lately, I think we've turned over probably thirty to forty percent of our clerks in the last ten years.
Okay, but this, this will have no impact on your compensation?
No.
It'll have no impact, other than there won't be a town clerk election until you retire?
Correct.
Okay, just trying to, just trying to grasp it.
That's the only difference. Yeah.
Just some of the terms are, are covered in the bylaw as well. We include with an asterisk, the elected position is one of those remaining bylaw positions. So it's covered by the present provisions of the bylaw, just so there's some employment requirements attached to it.
So Bob, would you be termed, you wouldn't be termed an elected official?
No, yeah, you are.
So it's not an appointed official?
No.
So some towns choose to appoint? By doing this, you're not being appointed?
Well, you know, it's funny, because the statute says that you can be elected or appointed and get tenure. So I could be an appointed person and still go through the same process. If you read nineteen B, it says elected or appointed.
Or appointed.
Yeah.
See, the, I, I did some reading on it, and I was confused, 'cause it is a debatable topic, and I think the debate is, is a town clerk, is it better for him to be appointed or elected? Because who's your boss if you're responsible to the voters or the selectmen? Sometimes you, your job is to report us if we're doing something wrong, that's part of the clerk. So that, that was the big debate, so we're not talking about appointed or elected, it's, you've got tenure.
Right.
And then unless you do something egregious, then, then there's the steps in the C U D.
Yeah, there's a procedure to follow, if, if, you know, if I was not in good behavior, then there'd be a process.
So that, that's all the debate I've seen, is, is elected verse, so is there conflict by going this route from an elected, still elected, but tenure?
I, see, to me, the office of the town clerk has to be apolitical. So by staying elected, you don't put yourself in the crosshairs of that debate where you have a, a boss or people you report to expecting you to behave a certain way, which would be in contravention to mass statute or federal statute.
So that, that was my concern, by saying that's not the issue here.
That's not the issue, no.
Okay.
And, and that's ultimately why I decided to stay and go this route rather than appointed, because the office needs to be neutral. And sometimes, and it's just human behavior, when you report to someone else and they have certain expectation, expectations of how you should behave or how you should act, and the state statute tells you, you have to act a different way, then that puts you in a, a bad spot, and, you know.
But that would be, you're talking about if it were an appointed position?
Correct.
But if it's an elected position, you are responsive to the electorate.
Correct.
So, but, we've, we've had changes in town government in, in the past. We went from a three board, three-man board to a five-man board. Those changes were a result of a town government committee study. And the committee came back and they, they went to town meeting and they said, we suggest that we make these changes for such and such, such reasons. So what would be, first of all, there was no town government study committee done. So what's the, what's your justification or rationale for doing this change, other than you don't have to run for election every, what, three years or whatever?
The point of it is tenure, you know, other positions in town get tenure, teachers get tenure, you know, firefighters, police, basically by their job positions have tenure after a certain number of years. So, yeah, it's, I'm just looking for the same treatment as those positions, basically.
But Bob, if you're doing a, a superior job, you, you, wouldn't you just get re-elected anyway, I mean, I.
I, you, you would, you would hope so, but you'd be surprised at the number of races that have been, recently, there's been a lot in, in the town clerk world. And you get a situation where you get a, a bunch of young moms out there campaigning around, and, you know, maybe the sitting town clerk isn't as popular as another person that runs against him. It becomes a popularity contest, as opposed to, you know, who's qualified to do the job. So I'm just looking for a little security for a position that really needs security. You can't have constant turnover every two or three years. You know, it, it takes you a couple of years just to get up to steam, to know exactly what you're supposed to do, and if you're gonna continue to go through that, you're gonna have problems. You're gonna have problems in, in the legislative area, in other areas, things are gonna not be upheld.
But it's a process that's worked well for the town since its inception, I'm just wondering what's on the, what's on the horizon that's bringing storm clouds that, that you're worried about?
Just that, you know, sheer chance that, you know, some person that's popular in town decides, you know, I need a job and I'm gonna run.
Okay.
And, you know, they, they may not be qualified to do the position, but they're popular in town, they get more votes, and they're the new clerk.
So what, what this is, is job security, till you're seventy years old, or until you decide to retire?
It's ten, it's tenure, tenure is tenure, that's exactly what it is.
Any other questions, Bob?
Now, I've thought long and hard about this, 'cause the tone of this is, you know, why are you special if, if someone wants to run and get elected, that's the choice of the people, but I think the one position in town, if I had to vote for a town clerk, I would vote for a duration of ten to fifteen years, because I think that's how important the, that position is, not three years. And I, and I agree with you, if someone comes up, you know, if it's a popularity contest, so be it they get elected, but the bigger picture is the town suffers, because the, the integrity of the job, and, and he's not a board, he's one person that works by himself and has, you know, training and such, so I think there's a danger of turning it over even three years. It's easy for me to say, I have a lot of respect for Bob, and, and, I mean, I think people asked you to be town manager, no offense, but if you wanted to throw your hat in, I mean, you were up at that level. I was on the fence on, on this, until you said, if you get your tenure, in five years you decide to do something else, then it reverts back to elections. Nobody comes in and fills you the last whatever.
Right, it's not, it's not for the position, it's just for the individual. Once they've gotten to a certain point, and have gotten a certain level of experience, then, then they can apply for it.
So the, the town clerk is, is a little bit of a unique position, you know, and I think if you look at a planning board of selectmen every three years, it's good to have new ideas, but the longevity and the, and the institutional mellows for a clerk is kind of important.
There's something to be said for stability.
Yeah.
You know?
I think that was the, the point that I was gonna make, is that stability is important in a position like this, because not only are they the keeper of the record, but they're also usually the, the local, they, they understand the, the low, the, the most recent history of how things have transpired. So I think that's, you know, I'm not saying a local historian, but you're, but you're the most recent historian in terms of how the operations work. I've had, I've worked in, in many communities where the town clerk's been elected year after year after year after year for many, many years, and it's never been a changeover, but, but I wasn't even aware of this provision until Bob mentioned it to me, and so, you know, from my perspective, I think he does a great job, I think he, I think he handles himself well, the fact that he's an attorney is even a plus, and to have a person of that qualification in that role is certainly helpful to somebody like me, and to our staff, so. I mean, organizationally, it, it does provide stability, I think that's important, in the organization that we're trying to build, we're trying to build a stable organization as it is. That's, that's just, that's just my two cents.
See, the thing is, if you, if you look at it from an accountability perspective, we're all held accountable. You know, we can get, we can get thrown out every three years. The key word you said tonight was apolitical, and it is an apolitical position. And I, I gotta think about that, but that's, that's a good point, as to how you, how you keep it stable, and how you probably, you know, you don't have sort of a run on the position, because they wanna make, we make four hundred thousand dollars a year or something. But it's, but it's.
I don't think I've made it in total, it's.
But I, I, I gotta think about this, but this, you made some valid points.
So are you here as a courtesy, or are you, we don't need to vote on this, because you're going right to the ballot with your petition, right?
Yeah, right, the, you know, the, the process provides for the petition, and then once you, once your signature's certified, assuming you have enough signatures, then it gets placed on the ballot. So I had talked to Bill and Mary Beth about this, and John had raised it with Bill.
I called Bill the other day, 'cause I, I said, hey, Bill, what's going on? I had not, I had no clue that this was even in, in action, and I.
I apologize, I, it wasn't meant to be secretive, it was meant to be, I gotta make sure I get my signatures before I say anything about it, because I really didn't just wanna put myself in a position of being embarrassed, 'cause I couldn't get the signatures, but.
Yeah, it was, it was also brought to my attention, somebody asked me about it, and I went, I have no idea what you're talking about. Didn't, didn't make me look good, but anyway, we're asking the questions that I'm sure the people at home were also asking.
Oh, absolutely.
When we're asking questions, we're not being accusatory or, or. When we're asking questions, we're not being accusatory or anything. We're just asking what everybody else is.
Believe me, I've gone door to door on this and I get all the same questions.
Yeah.
And that's why on the petition, it states right in there what exactly what it's going to do, what the ballot is going to read, because I wanted to be completely upfront about this. You know, I'm not trying to hide anything. I'm not trying to, you know, sneak anything in. I mean, I needed five hundred and eighty-nine signatures. I think I got seven hundred and sixty-five. So, you know, I really put the effort in to get the signatures because I wanted to be, there would be no doubt that, you know, I'm doing it for the right reason, so.
Had I known, I would have given you my papers too.
So, Bob, we really don't have a role to play here other than if we support it or don't support it?
It's purely information.
Okay.
Only because as a couple of you pointed out, it came as a little bit of surprise. I said, you know, I said, "Bob, why don't you come in and just explain it to the board so that everybody hears it firsthand. This is what's going on." And then he has the opportunity to sort of explain it because you don't often get that opportunity to do that.
No.
I think it's an opportunity to do that.
No, I appreciate it.
You know, and people want to have their questions. You don't want to have a situation where somebody says, "Well, I didn't know anything at all about this." Well, this is their opportunity. If they watch a selectman's meeting, they'll hear this discussion. If they read in the Foxborough Reporter or the Sun Chronicle, they'll, you know, this discussion will be noted. So, this is an information for everyone.
Yeah. And they're more than welcome to come downtown clerk's office and have a discussion with me at any time. I'm more than happy to discuss it with anybody, so.
I totally understand why you're doing this, Bob, and I think, you know, I agree with Jim, hearing the part about it going, reverting back to elected, that's good to know also. But I can totally understand why you would do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or...
If I may just make a comment because I've lived through two tenured town clerks in Westwood. The first one was there like fifty years and then the second one was, once she was there, five years sought tenure. And one of the things that they both conveyed in their request for tenure was that it completely takes you out of, it puts you above reproach during the election process. So, that if you are the person running the election for the entire town and you're on the ballot running, there was always that really tentative feel. And I understand Bob's reason for wanting to remain apolitical and not have to be in the election after this ballot question, not to have to campaign, but to run the elections, use all your energy to do that.
You know, the ethics has provided some wiggle room for you if you're running the election, but it's still not a comfortable position. And you don't, you know, the day of election, you don't want to be anywhere near there, even though that's your job. You're supposed to be there making sure the elections are working. So, that, you know, that part of it puts you in a really bad, you know, uncomfortable spot. And so, that would be a great benefit of this. But I really do want, any of you know me, you know, I try to be as neutral in this position as I can be. And it's hard sometimes because I know all of you, you're all running for things. I'd love to sign your papers. I'd love to be able to put signs on my lawn. I can't do that. I, you know, and I strictly instruct my staff, they are not to get involved in any of that either. You know, the office just can't be that positioned. It has to be extremely hands-off. And I pride myself in doing that, so.
One thing that comes out of these discussions sometimes in the interest of full disclosure, all the issues out there is that, well, as a town clerk, you know, who's your overseer? If that's the case, if you've got tenure, who's going to insist that you come to work every day? Well, the reality is I can tell you that that's not an issue with Bob. I mean, if it was, I'd say it. You know, I think people know me well enough by now that I'm going to say that, but what's on my mind. But I don't see that as an issue here. I think Bob is a pretty dedicated guy and he, you know, he puts the time in, you know, does the work that he has to do to get the job done. And I fully expect that he'll continue on in that role.
Well, when I ran for it the first time, one of the, there were six of us that ran. And one of the people that was running against me, her mission statement was, "Well, you'll never see him at town hall. He's a practicing attorney. He'll just be mailing it in and collecting a paycheck. If anybody knows me, you know, that's not me."
No, that's not the case.
You know, I'm there to do the job, so.
On Saturdays.
Yeah.
Whatever it takes. You know, night before elections, you know.
Sometimes shut the lights off together, right?
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay. Don't be here too late.
No. Yeah, that's going to get sticky. Let's slip right onto it. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. So, our last item is the town manager update. Bill Keegan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, in the interest of the sewer discussion tonight, I had on here a discussion point which Dave Feldman had raised to me at one point. It was the development of an economic development committee, a formation of an economic development committee, which I think is really helpful for studying strategy for economic development. And I think that we are, I talked to Sharon about that as well, and she's going to talk to the planning board about that thought and see if we can sort of start, put the wheels in motion for doing that. Because, you know, if, in order for us to be strategic, we have to have our own plans and really think about how we want to market ourselves as a community, you know, what are the areas that we'd like to see, you know, strategically, you know, marketed and so that we know that's the kind of development we want in certain areas and what kind of development we'd like to see. I mean, those are the kind of conversations we have to have internally so the outside world knows what we're trying to advocate for.
Oh.
And that's where that conversation happens.
I think we have one already set up.
Yeah, there was a, but there's only like two or three people and they're not really that active. So, we want to try and get that revitalized a little bit. And I'd like to play and act a role in that process as well because I actually enjoy that kind of work, so.
And, I mean, the planning board did discuss that. And Sharon, and I've been working with Sharon in regard to the possible fall liquor license. And she mentioned that it would be nice to have an economic plan so we can use that as a tool to decide how many, we may decide that we don't need extra licenses, or we may decide that we need a number, and then you have to decide what the number is. So, I think it's a sooner rather than later, that would be a great thing to get going. And I know the, I know Sharon definitely wants it and the planning board is very receptive to that.
Okay. So, tomorrow morning, I'll be having my first operations meeting since I started here. We, it's something I have where there's several key operating departments that I'll be meeting with on a weekly basis in my office, primarily fire, police, finance, assistant town manager, of course, and some planning, DPW, primarily the key financial, the key operating departments. And we'll continue to have monthly department head meetings with the rest of the department heads. But this is a week-to-week conversation to sort of make sure that we're not missing things in between. Things don't slip through the cracks. Because operationally, you know, I think that all the department heads will find this to be valuable for a cross-communication tool, but also it's extremely valuable to me knowing that I have my hand on the pulse of what's going on around me. So, we're going to start that again starting tomorrow morning. And then the new state budget will be coming out tomorrow as well. The governor has announced that. We understand that there are some challenges with what he's trying to propose for next year, but we'll see what he comes out with. I know he's a pretty smart guy. He's got a lot of good ideas, which he's trying to pursue at this point. The FEMA is actually, or MEMA has been working with us on the local level to try and come up with a proposal to the federal government that will actually get us assistance for all the major storms throughout the season. So, DPW has been putting together that information. We're trying to pull all those pieces together along with the fire department to actually make sure that we have, we can put our proposal in and see if it gets funded. We probably wouldn't, if it did get funded, it's not likely we'd see it in this fiscal year, but likely it would be next fiscal year. And so, we're hoping that while we're in the red right now, hopefully that would actually bring us back to the black. Obviously, we've got ways to fund the existing ongoing operations for the remainder of this year. And just hopefully that the weather gets warmer soon because it's getting a little bit crazy. Thanks to everyone for their hard work, for the, again, for all the storms. And I appreciate the board's comments as well on that because, you know, I consistently hear from folks that guys do a great job. And if there are issues, let us know because we can get to them because I know there are, we don't have perfection here, but we have a pretty good system in place and people are pretty responsive. So, again, thanks to all the DPW crews. And finally, I did meet with town council during the last interim, the two weeks. They are, first of all, they're very excited about being named. I did reach out to the two remaining candidates and let them know as well the same day. They're very excited. They are going to go with the hourly approach for now, and then we're going to look at whether or not that makes sense for us to go to the other approach.
Yeah, build some history.
Yeah, to see how that goes. So, we're going to try that for now and see how that works out. Dave DeLuca, council has agreed that Dave DeLuca can stay on as Licker Council. There's no issue there. He said he's perfectly fine with that. And we'll try that for a year and see how that works. So, and as far as the duration of the contract, he says, "Nothing in your charter that speaks to a specific term." He said, "That's strictly up to the board and how they want to handle that." But he said, "I'm used to doing it year for year, year after year." So, he said, "I don't have any specific concern about that either."
So, we would just annually reappoint?
Annual reappoint, that's right. Okay. Any questions about that? Okay.
Great, thanks.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Mary Beth, did you have anything?
Just to announce that we have two new employees, starting on March ninth. Patty Tisdale will be taking the Board of Health Administrative Secretary position. And Kathy Varnum has been hired as the Human Services Coordinator, replacing the retirement there. So, both, we decided to kind of create like a little orientation thing for the first two new hires of our tenure. So, that'll begin. We also have a student intern starting. And-
Unpaid.
Unpaid. College student. So, we'll be orienting them on March ninth for a little bit and telling them a little bit about the town and, you know, hoping to create long-term relationships. And we're very close, as you know, on the DPW contract. And tomorrow night, we go to AdCom with our other two approved contracts to explain them to them, the firefighters and the dispatchers.
Great. Thank you. You have action items, Jim?
Yes, you do. I'll go through these quickly. This is in regard to the Child Safety Committee. I move that the Board of Selectmen reappoint the following members of the Child Safety Committee for a term expiring on December 31st, 2016. And the reappointees are Bob Correa, Jeffrey Downs, Linda Walsh, Vicki Lowell, Sergeant Timothy O'Leary, Deborah Spinelli, and William Dudley.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
This is a small thing, but it's a big thing to them. We had formally changed the name from Child Safety Committee to Child Sexual Abuse Awareness Committee. It sounds like a technical thing, but it's kind of the crux of what they're about.
Yeah, that's actually correct.
Yeah. Can we just change that to Child Sexual-
Yeah, I'm sorry to pick up on that.
Yeah. The forms, do they have what's written on the forms?
All right, well, we can take a vote on it and get the forms figured out later.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
We'll get there.
Okay, the next is in regard to the Recreation Department.
We'll vote on it.
I'm sorry.
With that amendment.
Okay. You second the amendment?
Did you second it?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next one is in regard to the Recreation Department. This is accepting donation gifts to be used as raffle items for the father and daughter dance that was, I guess, held this week. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance by the Recreation Department of the following gifts: $50 gift certificate for Eagle Brook Saloon, four Taylor Swift concert tickets valued at $480 from the craft organization, $40 in gift certificates to Cupcake Charlie's, 10 passes valued at $120 to United Skates of America, 16 game tickets from the New England Revolution valued at $396, a sterling silver necklace from Cindy's Jewelers valued at $90, and a hand-knit scarf from Christine St. Pierre valued at $25. And thanks to all who donated.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is a donation to the Foxborough Animal Control. I move that the Board of Selectmen accept a donation of $50 from Mary and Edward Henry to the Animal Control Office in appreciation for help given by Animal Control Officer Sue Tibido.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is the approval of the meeting minutes. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the meeting minutes of February 17th, 2015, as is or as amended.
I'll second that.
Just one quick change on page seven. It was, one, two, three, four paragraphs up from the bottom. It's for a flat fee of, rather than $52.80, it should be $5,250 per month, or $63,000 a year.
Oh, yeah.
If we can get it for $52 a month, that would be good.
That'd be a good deal.
Should we give you that number again?
It should, I just took the, it should be $5,280. Eighty.
I have the officers for the Fox Cares Group. Vic Koka is the treasurer, Tom Perona is the vice president. That's on page one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next is in regard to the Fire Department, a donation. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the acceptance of a donation of $25 from Marie Circu by the Foxborough Fire Department and thank Mrs. Circu Bar for the donation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
That's it.
We have our information packet. Project letter on the 40B response.
And probably worth mentioning, the Ponset Reservoir Disposal Report that's on file now. I know they've been looking at that for years and years. So, just to let people know that that's published and I think it's downloadable. It's online.
Bill, were the new flood maps out?
I haven't actually seen the maps come out yet.
The new ones are online.
Are they online? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
No, I thought it was, when I was at town hall, I thought I saw a package with maps.
You could be right. I don't-
I'll take a look.
Yeah.
You want to flood?
We can check with-
No, no, I sit on the hill. Just go. But I'm just wondering what impact that has on some sections of the town.
Billion Inspector's Office or Conservation. Either way, Billion Inspector's Office or Conservation, either way.
Yeah.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor? Thank you. Good night.